Yeah.
That's fine.
I'm trying to turn around.
He's like, why?
It's all the wrong.
I said, I'm looking for the deer.
Like, I was wondering if I was going, we're just gonna go.
It looked like it was pretty.
They had time.
It was square.
If they want you to work somewhere, or they want to square it.
All the air.
And they have this.
You don't just feel like it, and it is.
I lost a lot of those places. We're lost.
It's not asking. It's embarrassing, like, somehow. Lucky you get to leave them here. I'm the one who's got to.
She says, you're gonna look.
Yeah. Thanks.
I just said, you're dead, not here with me.
Like, that's kind of our difference. I heard this last week, like, so giving someone to here, like, that was a wonderful. Thank you for being there.
Gordy Hartson.
Watching, I talk.
It's like that.
Do you know what?
Right. I have a bunch of, like, things out there.
Yes, I've got. Ever seen a project? I got, I got.
Gosh. Jamie?
Behind, like, school, we last year, they had to sing your name.
I'm just here, and I'm trying to get them to sound like. Fall apart. I don't know either. Now, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like. Just in a.
No, I don't want to say it. So, hey.
Yes.
Yeah. Sure. Love them.
That almost drew around.
It wasn't.
After I smoked them. Sometimes I wish my grandma could use a whole cup. All of that? Yeah, that's one day. Starts at six in the morning.
I used to work in a church. We always used to use the special.
Yeah. Yep.
We were just blowing tires, blowing engines. One night, we were raising ones. Got some, uh, there's a system. We might get to do this. Still, we're not just going to do it. Which was, we might have called hazmat.
Oh, my God. Wow.
Yeah.
I got it. Right now, I got it.
You didn't?
I know. And this is actually. I always like to tell them, so they're on, so that's true. I. There's probably times. I'm like, yeah, but I spend the heck even knows that. I don't know which question I come up to the other day. I'm sure I talked to people. I got the text from him.
Okay, it's private clocks, and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Dr. Gaver.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mrs. Noel, here. Mrs. Schuman, here. Mr. Shab. Mr. Umwin.
Here.
Mrs. Fink, here. Mr. Borch.
I am here.
Mr. Peterson.
Very good. Agenda was properly posted.
Sure was.
Thank you. Any public participation? Seeing none, we're gonna move forward to recognizing some arts and academic achievements. And I will give it up to Jamie.
First, we're gonna start with, uh, with Brianna and choir, so, um, Dean Borch is going to stand up and help hand out the certificates. And the advisors and the coaches are gonna say some names and really help us with pronunciations for a hundred percent accuracy. So Dean's gonna be the shaking of the hand and the hand, and, uh, handing over the certificate. We'll go from choir, then we'll follow up with band right after that. Brianna, anything you wanna say to start it out with as well? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Jamie. Miranda is an incredibly dedicated musician, and being a part of the WSMA State Honors Trouble Choir is only a small part of all that she does within choir and band. The process is a long one for auditioning. She learned a piece over the course of a couple of months. She auditioned last winter in February, and then there's a summer camp that they attend, which is only four days, that they prepare this music, and then they get back together in October for one and a half days for a full performance of collegiate level repertoire. So it is a really, really challenging time, but she put a lot of effort into it, and she really enjoyed it.
I can't say anything, but I'll say congratulations. Think I'd cancel anything else.
And then Haley and Claire both auditioned as eighth graders, and so they made it to the middle-level honors, and that is one that is available for middle schoolers up through eighth grade. They auditioned in eighth grade from MHLT last year, made it as eighth graders in the last spring, got their music in the similar fashion, and then they, but they don't necessarily work on it as a summer camp. They work on it all through the summer and into the early fall by themselves, and then they came together on a Friday afternoon, the, um, Friday afternoon, they did rehearsal, next day, they put on a performance down in Madison with that one. So it's a huge testament to their work that they did for only two and a half years by the time they hit the auditions, to be able to get to that point where they're auditioning and making up the state level. And so we have Claire and Haley both with that one.
Congratulations, Haley. It was supposed to be Claire.
Before we move on to girls swim, if everyone didn't realize, that's Bill Richter that was announcing. I think get a chance to introduce them as well. Next, we'll go to swim and Tierney Edwards, and before she gets to talk about any of her athletes, we'll also mention that she was one of the, uh, conference, she was the conference coach of the year for girls swim.
Um, this year, the girls swam really well. Um, we had seven girls go to the state meet, two as alternates, and the other five participated. We were seven and one at conference. Um, we placed second conference overall, placed second intersectionals, and it's the most girls in the highest we've done since 2020. So I'm really proud of them. Um, they have Olivia Mickel. She participated in two of our relays and then had two individual events at state. Darren Smolinski, she participated in all three of our relays and had an individual event. Avalon Collins participated in all three of our relays. Jamie Jorgensen participated in two of our relays. And then Hayden Fannerstill participated in two of our relays. And then Abby Mickel and Callie Baker were our alternates. Abby is not here, but Callie is.
That's her.
Thank you.
Next up will be cross country and Gordy Hartson, and also before we get to any of the cross-country athletes, Gordy was also the coach of the year for the conference.
So, um, boys team this year finished, finished first in conference, so this is a fourth year in a row. They've done that. First in the sectional meet, uh, made it to the state meet, and finished tenth overall at the state meet. And a lot of our guys are in the Nordic ski team, so not all of them are here tonight, but we have, so Brayden, I'll tell you who's not. So Brayden Kelly was our freshman this year, so he ended up being our number-two runner this year as a freshman. Kayden Redman, another freshman, was our number-six man on the team. Charlie Erst, he's a junior. Uh, he was our top runner, um, all year and dealt with injuries all year, so he just, so those guys have just toughed it out all season. Hunter is here. Hunter's a junior, Messiah, uh, he was our number-five runner. And really, your number-five runner is almost as important as your number-one runner in cross-country, just the logistics, the numericals, and Hunter, just his gains from last year to this year has been incredible, so he had a great season today. Uh, Cam Schmidt was our junior, this is his first year out, so he, um, was alternate this year. And I, he and Max at the sectional meet were a tie, so they had to go to the cameras to figure out who was gonna be our seventh man, so Max just edged him out, but. So Max Zeeman is next. Max is a junior also, um, second-year old from cross-country. He was our seventh man this year, and I said, just edge Cam out at the sectional meet. And Max also, like Hunter, had, really had big gains this year compared to last year, so congratulations to Max. And Barrett, Barrett Egan is a senior. He was our number-four man. He's skiing tonight. And then Parker McKinney, senior, he was our number-three man. So Parker and Barrett, this is our third trip to state, but they're not here. All right, and then for the girls. This year, we had two girls as our team, but, uh, we had two freshmen, but they were both really good. So Emerson, Emmy Rubo, was our top girl. So. Number-two in conference. Number-three in sectionals. Um, made it to the state meet, nineteenth overall, number-four freshman, I thought. And she's number-four all time on the five K list, so historically, number-four of the girls, so. And, um, Addison Egan is the other girl, she's number-six, so I don't have many, but they're good, so. Sure, so this year, we have girls that mean a sport for the fall.
Do we hear?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say thank you so much to the coaches for all your leadership, extra hours of effort, your planning, and then also to our student athletes. We do, we do know it takes dedication, perseverance, and just guts to make it through what you do and still be a good student here at Lakeland. And for that, we're very appreciative on how you make our Lakeland community look, so we applaud you all. Okay, thank you, and you don't have to stay for the rest of the. Next, our informational items. Any correspondence you wish to talk about?
Just, just a reminder that we, you know, have the election overview for the spring 2026 school board election, and all the board members have that in their bag.
Okay, very good. Uh, student board representative reports.
Hi, everyone. I have Jayden here today.
Hi.
Um, first of all, homecoming was a huge success for the school and the community. The school's tailgate was able to host about a thousand people that night.
The theater department had just presented the play called Trap. Um, it had a huge turnout, one of our biggest in a long time, and we are getting ready for our musical, and we are doing Once Upon a Mattress this year.
All the fall sports have finished their seasons, and winter sports have begun in our, in full swing.
Our Veterans Day program has succeeded in the past years, and we had many student volunteers help make this day possible for us.
And then the first trimester ends this Friday, and many students are excited to start new classes next week.
Okay, very good. Thank you. District administrative report.
Well, we start with, boy, what an excellent celebration tonight with all the people that were here and family members as well. It's kind of a neat, uh, neat addition when there's family here to support them as well. The, uh, the track, starting next month, in a perfect world, we'll start to highlight some of the, or we'll do some highlights from trimester one, it'll be in December, in the meeting, either the cow meeting or the board meeting, and we're gonna attempt to do that moving forward. But there's a couple of kids, just to give a brief presentation on a minute or something, minute or two, um, that's some highlights from trimester one, um, and we'll try to do that moving forward as well. There's a lot of positivity throughout the district, and there will be some presentations tonight that'll, um, be centered around that, but just in general, just the, from a morale standpoint, excitement, you can see the the homecoming piece, and a lot of, a lot of big events have gone very well, and there's been a lot of student participation, obviously led by the advisors and, and then the administrators as well. And we'll continue with the first initial steps of the strategic plan. Uh, will be in December, so we can kind of hit the ground running in January. That's all I have.
Very good. Next on the agenda is the school report card.
Okay, we might have to take a little bit of a, um, Levi's on his way in here, so we may have to, could we do a little shift here with facilities and technology?
Yeah, we, yep, absolutely.
Okay? We, we thought we'd be ready, but we went a little too quick. Maybe I spoke too fast, and maybe if we could flip-flop that to, uh, do you wanna do the course planning first before we do? Are you ready for the course planning?
Yeah.
Okay, so just to kind of stay in line that way, we'll just, we'll, we'll come back to the, uh, that piece as well, we'll start with the course planning guide, and then if, uh, we're not ready for that presentation, we'll go facilities and technology. So right now, it's the course planning guide piece.
Okay. So in your packet, you had a brief page and a half document with, uh, the key, um, updates for the 2026-27 course planning guide. I'm really excited to be bringing this to you in November, which is earlier than we have in past years. Um, we're, we're kind of gearing up for earlier, um, in the spring, having the whole scheduling process dialed in, and so that takes a whole lot of people to get it done, but we're, we're moving in that direction. So the first addition that I want to just quickly highlight for you is the addition of integrated science for next year. I've talked about this a little bit in the past. We eliminated physical science as our freshman-level course this year. All freshmen are taking biology this year, and next year, integrated science will become our sophomore-level science course. It will include a, a nice comprehensive mix of chemistry, astronomy, physics, electricity, and magnetism, and earth science, so it's gonna help us ensure that we're hitting all those significant standards before students move forward then on their path of either more advanced sciences or some of our other elective sciences as juniors and seniors. Um, the second, the second one that I'm going to highlight is kind of a tentative. Um, just in the last couple of weeks, we started a conversation with Nicolay about their introduction to education and teaching course. We're excited about the possibility of offering this at Lakeland because it will give us a chance to help nurture, uh, hopefully, some future educators that might come back to the Lakeland area. There are just a few unknowns right now that we have to work out in terms of logistics, logistics. There's a practicum piece that students would need to complete, and so I, I would like for you to approve that as an option for us, and I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to pull all of those pieces together, uh, so that's an offering for our students when they register for next year. And then the final addition is, um, last year, we tweaked some of our physical education course options and revised our speed, strength, and agility course a little bit. This year, we would like to add an advanced version of that same course, so speed, strength, and agility, level-one, and then we would add the level-two. Um, none of these courses are courses that we anticipate any newer additional costs associated with. We will be able to staff these with our current staff, and, um, I think that's all I have to add about those. There's just one significant change on the back of that first page. Um, we are going to change the title of investigative science to zoology, which is a little bit more in line with what the course actually is, and we're, as I've reviewed and dug through all of our courses, when those questions come up, I always go to the state course codes, review to make sure we have a close match, and really, what that course had become was not very well-aligned with what the course was originally. So I'm just proposing changing the stor, the state course code and the title. Also, our science department thought it might help eliminate any confusion between investigative science and integrated science because those sound similar, um, which is a small change, but I feel, uh, very confident in recommending those changes to you.
Any questions for Katie? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the 26-27 school year course planning guide as presented by the director of teaching and learning. How in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
He's running in the door.
Would, would you like a few minutes just to catch your breath? Okay. All right, well, then next on the agenda is the school report card update. I did this right here. Oh, it's everybody doing.
We have a really good turnout for the student recognitions for our state.
Good. I apologize that Jamie didn't come in, she was actually in the gym. Did she make it in?
She was here.
Oh, she's there, that's good. Okay, never mind, and we're good. All right, so, um, one of the things that last week, we, the state released three report cards. We had known this data for about four weeks or so prior. We were really excited, and we were excited for the opportunity to talk to our board, talk to our staff, which we did this morning, with the goal, in essence, to say, we've made growth. For the first time in five years, our school is in the meets expectations category. As we talked about with our team this morning, though, the goal for us is not to end here. Like, we are just barely into the meets expectation category. We don't wanna stay in that spot. But we have jumped forward, I guess, in incremental chunks over the course of the last couple of years because we feel that our intentional actions and things that we've been doing are really pushing forward some positive change for our kids, which are essentially making them have more success and more opportunities when they're taking their state tests, but also with the goal, we're just trying to help prepare them for life after high school. So in the process of going through this, and going through and looking at breaking down our report card, Mr. Ryan's gonna talk about some of just the little things in the categories and some of the pieces that we've, we've honed in on, but ultimately, for our, our team, what we talked about is, is this is a celebration, and we sat as a team three years ago in this library, um, with two district administrators ago, and we had a really sour taste in our mouth because at that point in time, we were the lowest or second-lowest rated school district in the state of Wisconsin. And I remember that feeling, and I remember sitting there going through that. The joy that we were able to feel as a staff this morning because the things that we're doing are actually working, we're seeing some positive results for our growth, that really is an essential component, I think, to why we do what we do, to be able to see visible results, things that are moving us forward in the right direction.
So as Mr. Massey said, we're in the meets expectations category now. Um, over the past two years, our overall report card score has improved eleven point five points, and earlier today, I had a conversation with one of our CISA colleagues that collaborates with us, and, and our CISA friends, they're invested too, right? Like, they, they know we're working hard here, and they support us, and they feel like they're part of the team. And, um, Ryan McCain said, he said, I was looking at all of the data, I downloaded the sheets. He said, you passed up forty-nine other high schools from last year to this year. You're that much higher in the rank. And he knows, we know, we still have work to do, but that was one little piece that I hadn't even, uh, picked out, and I thought that was worth, worth noting. So we are being really intentional about the things that we're doing, and it's a team effort. Our full administration team, our staff is working hard, and it's hard sometimes because we don't, we can't always say, ooh, TB twenty, that's what's causing this exact thing, but we know that we've been really intentional to choose research-based improvement strategies that are, are now starting to show those improvements. And so our TB twenty is a big part of it. Our staff has done a ton of work as we're developing our guaranteed and viable curriculum. It's not done, but we're, we're just like, we keep chipping away at it. Ultimately, that work is helping us improve our tier-one instruction. That's what's happening in the classroom for all students, and, and ultimately, we're really digging into engagement. We want all students to find their place in the regular general education classroom and be engaged in that setting. We've added intervention support in both math and ELA, and part of that has allowed us to move more students into courses that are giving them grade-level learning, not being in below-grade-level learning, which we know is critical for students to become proficient. The trimester schedule, we feel like, has been a positive impact in the big picture, and we're continuing to do our work as a professional learning community and collaborate and look at student data and think about all, how all of those pieces fit together as we can be intentional to help students improve. So lots of things going on, and, and we're not done. Lots of work to still do. We're not satisfied. Levi said it. We're improving, we're proud of that, but we have not hit the bar that we want for our students. Our achievement scores are very comparable to what you see across the state for the average. Our ELA achievement score is just a hair underneath the state average, and our math score crept up above the state average a little bit this year, but when we look at our growth scores, we know that we have work to do, and we're having really intentional conversations, uh, both with those departments, but also school-wide about what can we do to make sure that all students are growing at a rate that's going to help them be proficient and successful when they leave Lakeland. So one of the things we addressed with our team this morning, and I want to call up for you, is you, you may have seen there's some media that is, uh, challenging the validity of the state report cards. In the last two years, DPI has, um, made adjustments to the way that the scoring is. They've made adjustments to, uh, the ranges, and, and we recognize that. Um, we've been really careful not to make any comparisons or claims that could be misleading or misrepresentative of the work that we've actually done. Our bar is high, I've said that a couple of times. But despite the, despite the inconsistencies with the report card, like, there is evident growth. When I say we've passed up forty-nine high schools, like, every, everyone was subject to the same scoring changes that happened on the report card. We are still improving at a rate higher than other schools in the state. So we're gonna celebrate that.
Yeah, so, I think the key, it's really good. The key, one of the key things is the word intention, right? Intentional, like the decisions and things that we're making. But I told our, our team this morning too, it's like, we don't want to focus on thinking our intentional action was to improve the report card. Because our goal is, is not really the report card. Our goal is making sure that our kids are, are ready for life after high school. And in return, the collateral of it is, is we see our report card improve because of the changes that we're, that we're focused on. And so those intentional actions like Katie talked about, when we're seeing some of the growth that's taking place, it's giving us feedback to know that this is working. Obviously, the, the team also saw today though, it's like, there's room for growth. We looked at it, I think, the top-rated high school in the state of Wisconsin was like Whitefish Bay, had like a ninety-six or something on their report card. Okay, well, different dynamics, different things going on there, but it, what do we gotta do to get to the top? Like, what do we do to keep growing as we go through this process? But I think it's really important to talk about, like, how do we speak about what's happening at Lakeland to other people? And I shared this with our staff this morning because the common question that I get, and I think a lot of people who work in the school get that as well, is like, well, how are things at school? And how we answer that question might be the, the vibe that those group of people get about the school. And then they'll pass it on to somebody else who passes it on to somebody else. I want to share that same thought process and challenge to our board as well though, is like, we're all on the same team. I know that as employees in the district, we got hired to be in the district, but as board members, you were elected by our, our voters to be people that would represent the voice of the people, but you got to join the team and be a part of what's happening here at Lakeland. And so the input and the feedback that we get from the board is a part of the process for us that goes into what we're trying to do to improve life at Lakeland. And so when people ask you, "Well, how are things at Lakeland?", right? I want you to think about it. We have some positive talking points, but we always want to say like, but we're not satisfied. Right? We're gonna keep growing and getting better. But are things good? Yeah, they're a whole heck of a lot better than they were just three years ago. And, and the trajectory that we're on right now, we're moving in the right direction. And so, I feel really proud of the effort that our staff has put forward, not because it's something like, "Oh, hey, look at us. We're, we're doing great things", but because intentional work is leading to intentional growth. And, and hopefully if we keep moving on this path and moving on this track, our kids are gonna continue to see those improvements in their directions. So, just grateful for the opportunity that we could present some positive report card data with you, but also know that we're still grinding and we're still getting after trying to be the best high school that we can be with our dynamics. So.
Questions? Any questions for Mr. Massey?
I, I do, uh, will there be an opportunity to celebrate this achievement and growth with our staff? Has, has anything been planned? Do you know?
Our staff, we had a meet, they had a meeting this morning as well from a, it's a brief part of, just a brief celebration in the morning hours today at the beginning of the school day or be, prior to the school day. I'm not sure anything else is planned. Is there something you'd like from a, a connection to the school board, to the staff?
Something we should consider, I think.
Okay.
And, uh, will we present this with our students too because they're the ones that did the work?
Yes. Yep. So we have celebrations coming up in the second trimester for celebrate the first trimester, and this will be a part of our celebrations as we go through that. Yeah.
Is the guaranteed and viable curriculum somehow related to the portrait of a graduate?
I, I guess I'm, I'm.
Is it related to?
Portrait of a graduate, okay.
So the idea of.
I just, it was highlighted and I, I mean, first of all, guaranteed curriculum always comes out in me, but I just, it was, it was capitalized, which made me think kind of like a portrait of a graduate, that that's a capitalized thing. So I, I just, I'm curious. Are they related?
I, I think everything's related as we go through this. So like, we're not doing anything that shouldn't be related, but the idea that our curriculum is gonna prepare kids for life after high school is a definite intentional thing, so they are very related. What we want from our guaranteed and viable curriculum is, is tying back to the understanding of, are we, are we certain about what we're teaching kids? What do we want kids to know? Right? How are we gonna be sure that they know it? And what do we do when they don't know it and what do we do when they do know it? And so our goal in going through that guaranteed and viable curriculum is understanding that our kids are gonna get the same experience regardless of who the teacher is, in terms of what they're gonna be covering, how we're assessing students in those ways. One of the things that Katie didn't have on there is our instructional coaches as well have, have been working to help raise the bar for instruction in the classroom. So that way, once we have the content down of what, what is most important for our kids to learn, that we are also providing them instruction that helps to make sure that more kids are learning it. So, to say, is it, is it tied to what a portrait of a graduate would be? Absolutely. I said, it, like, ultimately, everything we're doing here is to try to help kids be ready for life after high school. I would shift your focus away from portrait to graduate language though, to flight plan, to continue on with where we're going with this because our goal is that our kids are gonna be ready to fly when they leave this high school. And so our language shift in that is really looking at that idea of, you know, what do you want to do after high school and are we helping to prepare you to do that?
So all three are semantics, same concept. I mean, you use pretty much the same language.
Yeah, you can say, you can say that, but I'm, I'll come back and I'll fight you and I'll say, no, they're not semantics. Flight plan is intentional for us, right? And so like, we, we're gonna use that language with intentionality because it's figurative language at a time too. Our school specifically. The portrait of a graduate is something that's used universally nationwide, but we want to make it Lakeland's in what we're doing here.
So we individualize for this?
Yeah, for sure. Yep.
And I guess I would just add, like, the words guaranteed and viable curriculum, like, if you Google it, you'll see all kinds of things about it. The guaranteed and viable part really connects to the way we're developing our curriculum to make sure that it's something, like, when I talked about our addition to the sophomore science class, we are carefully looking at the standards we're expected to cover for all students. And, and we're guaranteeing all kids are gonna have access to the learning connected to those. Viable, is it timely? Are we able to do that in the amount of time that we have students? So it has to do with our curriculum mapping and the scope and sequence and the vertical planning that happens. It's like all of those pieces put together, not just like, here's the textbook, we're gonna teach that.
Yes, Dean?
Levi, is it too early to have, like, identified areas within the current report card that you want to work on to help get the growth in the next, before the next one?
So I feel like we've, we've identified some of those areas. It's more so now looking at what are the factors that are gonna, are gonna drive that a little bit. One of the things I think that's always so hard when you're in a situation like this is to make drastic changes when maybe something that we're doing is actually working because these are three-year rolling scores. And so they take three years' worth of data to give us where our report cards at. And so we might've had a really good year last year, but maybe the previous two years weren't quite as good. And so we always want to tread lightly before we do anything too drastic. But growth in, in, in ELA has, has been a focus for us. It's also been an area, unfortunately, over the last three years or four or five years, we've had the most turnover. Um, and we've been short-staffed at times in those areas. And so we're hoping that having full staffing is gonna help us provide and meet the needs of kids. We're working on different changes to get kids to grade-level curriculum and just being able to be with their peers in those classrooms. I mean, Jen can attest to this, like, it's been a, it's been a huge piece for her to keep pushing all of us to conse- to say, can we provide access to the same grade-level content for all of our kids? And so that's, it's gonna be consistently a challenge we're trying to work on. And also making our classrooms more engaging so that when a kid's sitting in a classroom, it might not have been that they don't understand, but they just didn't want to engage. How are we creating lessons and, and activities that bring out the learning and, and move it away from direct instruction just from our instructors? So, yeah.
Yes?
Other than the report card, what other external measures do you guys look at over a year? I think you talked about ACT scores in the spring.
So, we have a ton of data. We, we look, we have pre-ACT data in the fall for our ninth, tenth and eleventh graders. And then again, um, ninth and tenth in the spring, pre-ACT, pre-ACT for our eleventh graders. We also still utilize the STAR assessment for our students who are below grade level and receiving intervention as another data point. But then we look at, we look at so many other things. We look at attendance and behavior and, um,
Student survey results.
Student, yeah.
Student survey results.
Yeah, um, I mean, there's just, like, this spreadsheet is very comprehensive. We look at our AP results, um. Yeah.
Are you, or is that your last?
That's the last one, yeah.
A lot of times we go through this and we usually have bought down insuency and absentee, and you haven't mentioned that. I'm sure it's a focus, but do you see that as, are you, is there more to be done there? Is there more that the board can do about that and would it make a difference?
I, I think there is something that every, that everybody has to take part in. Kristin can attest to this. We talked at the last Indian Education Committee meeting. As a high school, we, we openly asked for feedback as to ways that we can improve behaviors and we can improve attendance. We said it specifically at that meeting for our tribal kids, but really generally speaking, this is how we can do that for everyone. It's a constant, it's a constant conversation. Attendance across the nation continues to be low since COVID. Kids are seeing in-person learning as optional because COVID changed their thinking about that. And so, we're trying to, trying to figure out ways to get kids to believe that being in our classrooms is the best thing for them. And that's a choice that they make that we can't force them to be there, the punitive consequences that come into play. We go back and forth about how much is too much, how much is too little. Behavior, right? You know, we've sat here with expulsion hearings and stuff like that, but like, ultimately, the choices that our kids are making, we need to get more to the root of like, how do we help guide their choices in a better direction? The elementary schools play a huge role in that as well. These kids come to us as mainly pre-developed little humans that are, have habits and, and things that, that we need to work together and partner with the elementary schools. And that coordination is something that Jamie's been working on, but when we've had the turnover that we've had in our district administrative position, every time we gain some ground, we, we fall back a little bit with that. And so, it's something that I know he's been very passionate about working with our, with our elementary schools to say, how can we partner to do what's best for our kids? So that K through twelve, they get to a better place. And, you know, if, if we say something is, is an attendance measure, but it's different at the elementary school, there's a trained habit for nine years that is, that changes when they get to the high school as well. Yep.
Did we receive the AP results from last year?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, um, because.
I mean, I remember the ACT, but I don't remember the AP, but I, maybe I just didn't focus on it. So I was just curious.
I, I would, I feel like I probably highlighted it specifically because there was a question about how our AP scores would be after the trimester. And we, we did not have an average score change. I was pleased to see.
I, I probably just need to go back to my students.
If I can hear you.
Thank you for all the work you guys have done.
Thank you so much.
Swing back.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, next is the facility status report.
So as Joe's walking up there, kind of the idea is, you know, both Joe and Jose, they've been coming up and asking for different things and having requests. It's nice to have a little update of three minutes or less so they can kind of just fill you on some things that are important to them and things that are going well. Floor is yours, Joe.
All right. Yeah, I've got just a little bit. Last year's report for me was pretty quick and a lot of things were happening when I walked in the door. You know, a lot of those things have been completed, the bleachers, the ticket booth. Last year, we replaced the AC unit in the server room. We had to replace condensers and evap coils and the cooler in the kitchen. That was kind of some of our bigger stuff right when I walked in, other than the pool being empty when I got here. It has water in it now. Some of the stuff we've had going on, uh, working with Jose and stuff, we repurposed some of the promethium boards that he's taken out of classrooms. We put one in the, in the maintenance shop. Now, I don't have to spend a bunch of time going through my calendars and putting everything up on a magnetic whiteboard and making sure everybody knows what they're doing. They can just come in, promethium board's already up, it's got our facilities calendar on it. Everybody knows, hopefully, as long as it's there, what's happening that night. And, uh, and it just takes some of the confusion away over the course of the night. Really, most of our stuff is prepping, right? We get in here, summer is big clean and then prepping for fall sports. You know, we got some aging turf. We're not gonna talk about that in this presentation though. Softball and baseball wrap up spring, summer. We got a lot of youth softball. They pretty much run both our fields through into August. You know, we had, we got our, we got our lights working on the football field this year. I don't know if anybody was at any football games or any soccer games, but those were all designed to work with music. So with Jose and Emily, we were able to get Musco onboard and get a bunch of the songs and stuff those guys wanted downloaded. So, it was pretty funny when I was dealing with that guy. He, you know, he was wherever he was. And he said, "Well, he said, 'Do you want, uh, do you wanna take it for a test drive?'" "Yeah, absolutely." It's three o'clock in the afternoon, bright sunny day. I'm like, "Yep, let's go." And he comes on the phone and he says, "Oh, man, this is, are you all right?" He goes, "I just turned the lights on at the Steelers stadium." I was working on that before I was working on yours. So, pretty high-tech system, same one that Pittsburgh's running in theirs. Kind of a big deal. With Emily and athletics, we got new conference banners up in the field house. All the new championship banners are up and moved. We got a little bit more to do in there, not a ton. Before school, Patrick and Preston were able to get a bunch of painting done. They painted above the lockers. Did you guys all notice the hallway out here was painted before school?
I stopped and looked at it on the.
Yeah, this wall in here was painted. We got to work with Katie and Levi a little bit. We had, I'd say we had a little bit of a paint problem. I would consider it a problem. We had about two hundred-plus colors in our paint storage area. So with work at Levi and Katie, it kind of made those guys choose kind of some core colors. And we have five now. Makes it a little bit easier for us. The teachers, we don't give them a, you know, a Home and Lindsay book and tell them to pick. They can pick from our five colors. We go from there, we can stock them. Makes it a little bit more economical and easier to work with on our end. Foods, we added the second foods room this year. All that was kind of taken apart, probably about ten, twelve, thirteen years ago. So, we didn't have outlets for ovens, a lot of things. So we got, we got everything back up and running in there, rewired. We were able to replace four outlets in science on a one-sixty. I think that's been on the list for a long time. We got some of that stuff done. Run through, do all our air handlers. We've got sixteen air handlers inside the, inside the building. We've got seven rooftops. We've got thirty-five VAV boxes. Got a lot of HVAC stuff in here. Guys go through a change since our last one. Everything's had filter changes, condensers cleaned, um, twice. So, kind of getting, getting a little bit more of a regular schedule, I would say, than maybe we've had. Rooftop drain cleaning. A lot of times when we talk about the roof leaks or whatever, it's not really roof. We might have, you know, flashing ceilings and stuff like that that are failing. The big one over in Tika's room a couple of years ago before I got here was a roof drain. You know, so Patrick's on the roof monthly, chasing around seagull feathers and getting all that stuff out of there and taking care of it. We were able to do the STAR project. You guys approved that. Meyer and Edco, those guys were done in three days. It was phenomenal. I couldn't be more impressed with how fast it was. Not that there's not box. We got one room that's a little funky down there still, but they're, they've been great. And Meyer was phenomenal. They did a really good job. So we've got, we've got a maintenance ticket system. We use the same thing for IT. Jose kind of maybe spruced it up a little bit for us to use. It gives you the ability to make a, create a ticket and it goes to all the maintenance guys right away. So if I'm not at my desk or I'm running around, I don't see an email for a couple hours, the guys get them on their tablets. I think it's worked out pretty well. Since last October, we've had three hundred and three tickets. So, and that's just kind of pop-up stuff on top of what the guys are doing during the day, whether it's lights, outlets, drains. whether it's lights, outlets, drains, whatever. We're ready to go, pretty, as ready as we're gonna be for winter. Gonna swap everything out and, yeah, we got plows on and just waiting now. I guess from a staffing standpoint, we're kind of testing the waters with a modified cleaning schedule right now. Since I started, we've only been fully staffed for a month. So we're running at six. And then, yeah, so we're just kind of trying some different things. Dealing with Arrowhead and new schools out of Milwaukee. And they're, they're running, instead of seven custodians in seven areas that we can't do, because we just can't. Now they're kind of team cleaning. You're gonna do like, I have a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule. Uh, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, and then every day. So they all kind of overlap. The goal is that they can get things done, maybe a little bit more efficient, try and take care of the events. There, I don't think it was received real well in the beginning. I would say ninety-five percent of them have come around and they're finding they have more time at night to be able to jump out of scrubber. You know, they're getting to dust some windowsills, do, do some windows in rooms that they might not get to till summer. So, it's been working. It's not great, but, um, yeah. We've got just kind of our constant stuff, electrical. HVAC is a big part of what we do all winter long. We're chasing stuff every day. Kind of future stuff, Jamie and I were able to sit down, have a meeting with Schneider, Zoom meeting. Just trying to mend some relationships and get some visibility on what happened and why they're not here and get them back in here and figure out what's going on. We got some pretty big, pretty big ticket items that we haven't been able to monitor and see for the past few years and we're getting, I think we're getting close to, we're establishing a working relationship at least again and that's gonna be huge for us. Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking forward to, looking forward to putting this facilities committee together, getting together, come up with some priorities and moving forward. That's all I got.
And that was gonna be one of my questions, is are we ready to start meeting as a facilities committee? Do we have?
I'm ready.
Like a dollar amount that's, that's available?
I think we have a pretty good idea. We're getting pretty close to, to being able to meet.
Okay. Maybe sometime in December?
I think so. Okay.
Do, do you have a preference sometime during the, during the day?
That doesn't, that doesn't matter to me. I'm, whatever. We'll make it work. Probably not on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Then I can watch hockey.
This community that helped Tarasco?
Hey, you might get some questions. Everybody has any questions? But I think one of the biggest things is us having a plan for preventive maintenance and being on a consistent basis. So, we're not having all those surprises when they happen. There's some, there's some work that can be done in the short stage or a smaller venue versus becoming a WAP or problem or a concern or immediate concern. So thanks for the work, getting us on a schedule for preventive maintenance with everything.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the technology report.
All right, so from a technology standpoint, just to provide a quick update, this started as part of the three-year roadmap that we have in the technology department. And on fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna focus more on, even though we have five categories, we're gonna focus more and add more resources into four categories. The four categories that I'm gonna talk about today, tonight, it's gonna be customer service, network of servers, cybersecurity, and infrastructure. Those are the ones that we're adding the most resources. And pretty much twenty-nine of the project portfolio that we have is embedded on those four categories. Not saying that the other ones don't count, but, uh, those are the ones that we're gonna focus the most. So in customer service, the first one is that we do every year is the deliverable of Chromebooks twenty-five percent fleet. That's a collaboration that we do with administration technology to make that purchase perform the meaning, make sure we roll out devices that are standardized and that are equipped to perform assessments for our standard testings and so on. So this last year, the milestone was a hundred and seventy-five that were brought into our environment. Those are what we classify as endpoints. So, a hundred and seventy-five endpoints were introduced and they were deployed to all our ninth graders. Those will remain with that generation all the way until they graduate. So that was our first deliverable in twenty-five, twenty-six. The second deliverable, and we spoke a little bit about it, is the workflow attendance kiosk. So at the beginning of the year, we piloted last year in five location, uh, some, uh, attendance kiosks to track students from one place to the other. Now we expanded towards sixty-two. That is a collaboration as well with maintenance technology and administration to, to have those, uh, those stations strategically located in, in, in certain places. That way the teacher can continue performing the class and they can continue doing the, the traffic, that, that type of item. So it's basically streamlined and you can collect data. It's a very powerful tool that you can, that you can do. It's sixty-two across, uh, across the, our campus. The next project that was delivered at the start of twenty-five, twenty-six was the new line interactive displays that Joe mentioned. We basically set up, phase one was completed. We deployed twenty-two interactive displays and decommissioned the other twenty-two. We're working through, towards repurposing those, as mentioned it. Basically, that's where we put into the weight rooms. We are trying to find ways of what to put. If they're still good, what can we do with it, right? And there is also part of the, uh, one thing that was happening during that first deliverable was, uh, getting that first training launch. And we're gonna continue doing more training so we can continue standardizing that platform that new line provides. All right? The next item in the category that we have in our roadmap is a network and server project. A little bit of work here. It was more, uh, towards focus on access points and switches. All our focus in July, this year was in firmware, firmware updates, security updates. Make sure that there, those endpoints, those access points are not hacked. So we deploy all those, uh, updates. One thing that was happening over this semester was the Wings and Transition Center reconfiguration of the switches and the firewall. Now what happened is we basically, uh, are mapped, they're connected towards the main campus. So they have an encrypted tone. So that's a good security win. And also this year, we're gonna be kicking off, uh, understanding what are the needs for CAT II. This new cycle in E-Rate for CAT II kickoff is five years. So we're gonna basically understand how our, what, what is our environment needs. In the cybersecurity is the next one. From an update standpoint, uh, basically we are at this point in phase two. So what does that mean? Basically, a couple of changes that happen is we are just maintaining where we at in our cybersecurity packages. But some recent changes is we were in live-in security, which was our security awareness training. And now we migrated towards home trace. Some wins by migration with that cybersecurity training was, uh, it is integrated as a single sign-on. They're short, seven to ten minute burst. And, uh, basically most robust phishing, uh, and basically if you click, you have on-the-spot trade. That's, uh, basically what it means, one of the additions on that item. We perform our two-factor authentication audit and also expanded a little bit more the plan, uh, enrolling into travelers. That was the new insurance, which they're providing more scanning. As far as, uh, uh, infrastructure, a couple of highlights that already happened this year. The deployment of the new printers. We basically deployed, the whole team deployed in collaboration with administration, maintenance and technology, twenty-one printers and three additional units in the high-traffic areas. Basically, all those printers are upgraded and they're performing very well with the new software, PaperCut. And lastly, in the engineering tech ed, that was a, a good win, which was migrate the Autodesk server host drawing software. Now we are in cloud-based. So basically we don't need to host it anymore. So those updates are more seamless from the, from the student's standpoint. Here, uh, is the list of all the projects that we're gonna be focusing this year. And I want to show, this one was pretty cool. This is a great win. We had an intern this summer, Josh Ratterback, at Veris Market. He, uh, he worked with us all the month of June, July. One thing that was very powerful is we took that platform that Joe was mentioning about our ticketing system and our assets. Basically, we have been, we did sessions of JavaScript and we basically took over all the, all the coding. He coded all this and created a list of every asset in order to perform projections, uh, for when, where are our assets located and when is gonna be the end of life. What it does for us is better planning. So we understand when our assets are allocated. For example, here, most of our assets that are represented, seventy percent is all Chromebooks. So that is the bulk of all our assets in this organization. And if we see, these are reports that are automated, they're completely happening. And, uh, end of life, we can see the cycles of when a lot of assets are going to arrive at the end of life, which tell us, okay, we need to focus on that year. We may have a fluctuation year and we can plan better. Those are the kind of, uh, tools that we can use that that student provide over the summer. And here's just a little breakdown as an example of our Chromebook situation, how we're doing, how many are at end-of-life moment. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You're, assets are units, not by cost.
Pardon me?
The, the term asset applies to how many devices, not-
No, cost. Just a device. An employee, a station.
Sure.
A display.
And I guess the other, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have anything similar in terms of licensed software that would presently use? And do we have any exposure there of large software purchases that might be ending or might?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll trust that you have it. Thanks. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Jose?
Thank you very much. Very detailed. Appreciate it.
Okay, next are the board committee and board liaison reports. Uh, nothing for six point one?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, church school meetings. First of all, Jen, thank you for recording. That next morning, since I wasn't able to make the meeting, I was able to make the meeting.
Of course.
So, uh, that was very, very helpful to me. And it, it's good to see that, you know, I could tell by the, the discussion and talk that, that things are, are going well. So, but I will, Jamie?
Sure. You know, Jen, Lisa, and Eric are there a lot, were there a lot, Sean's listening to the, uh, the audio. I'm sure other board members are as well. You know, we've made really a conscious effort to have a lot of interaction with both the certified staff at STAR as well as the, uh, as a, as a support staff. So it's not really from the board, from their meeting necessarily, just kind of ad lib from that. There's nothing really excessively new from the, the minutes from the last meeting that we previously shared. Uh, there might be one or two specific things, maybe a hire here or there. But I think the relationship is, is very strong. I don't have a comparison point. I'm not looking to make a comparison. But I'd say that Jen Savell is probably one of the biggest reasons because of the relationship with STAR in the transition center and the back and forth that she does with the Wings program, obviously a little different there too. But I'd like to just make sure she's, she's recognized that she's probably the primary person, that the relationship is so strong with her dedication and, and demeanor and willingness to help in all capacities. It's very, it's much recognized from the Board of Governance at the STAR School as well.
Lisa, please.
Um, a couple of things that I noted, um, just if we're gonna give accolades. It seems like the, the community in general needs to be, um, given a thumbs up on it. I mean, there are so many people that, that come in and say, oh, you need this, and they just provide it. I think they just set up the stove, new stove, and all of that was donated. So amazing community that's able to see the needs and, and fill them and they consistently have different fundraising things that they're doing. One of the things that Jen said was there was no real regression in our students as far as, um, stepping back from the summer and losing ground. They pretty much stayed even. And then lastly, they're still looking for speech pathologists. A lot of them want to do the work, um, virtually. And unfortunately, we need them live in this type of situation. So if we're trying to find them, I think they have one out of all of the ones that they're looking for. So still trying to find them.
And that's very much on the high priority list. We've reached out, both Jen and I have reached out to Stevens Point's hiring pieces and we figured out who, what people we have in place that people can work under for their externships and different things like that. So that's a, a priority point for all of us as well. That's a great point, Lisa.
And was there some discussion relative to those students who are going into speech therapy? They, they need a practicum and they could come up here?
Possibly, yes. It's a similar thing, you think of like student teaching type thing, but it's after, after the point. So instead of an internship, it's an externship. But now that Jen's figured out the, she's spent a lot of time to figure out which people can be placed, uh, as a supervisory role. So we've been in contact with both the placement person at Stevens Point and, um, one more person within the organization for two things. One, for externships, and two, for permanent hires. So they'll be made aware from a weekend standpoint too. So there's a lot of effort being made that way because anything that's done at whatever grade level, it doesn't matter to sixth or eighth or kindergarten or two, second grade, whatever the case is, that's gonna help that student the earliest that assistance can be provided. Jen, you have anything else to add about that piece?
I think, excuse me, thank you to you as well, just for being part of that. Erica, just stepping up and being part of STAR.
Of course. Yes, thank you so very much, uh, you know, the great relationship and thank you for attending the meetings. It's good to see that they're making such huge impacts and, uh, and getting their students employed and out in the community and doing great things. Okay, anything else with that? Thank you very much. Next is the policy committee.
Lisa, Tom and I have been meeting. We are continuing the eight thousand series, um, and just going through every policy and looking at it. The items you'll be making a motion on to approve tonight are just minor little things that we discuss when we're meeting. Like the first policy, we changed it from the district administrator doing it to anybody in administration. Things like changing the word children to students. We changed the name of a title. We've added administrative guidelines to policies to attach them. And just changing some terminology, there was one that said the clerk would do the work and Lisa does it, so we put Lisa's title on there instead of mine. But it's just us going through, reviewing every policy, reading it, looking at the words. We talk about it and then bring them to you. So we're just still cleaning up all the policies from when we took over three years ago. So we'll continue again in December, uh, working on another ten and we have great conversations, um, in that group, so.
And sometimes they end up like STAR asked about something which ended up coming up into policy this time around. So it was, you know, knowledge that we can now use where they were asking and I didn't really answer, and so the administration, what maybe to tell us.
Very good. Okay, then I need a motion to approve the following policies. Eighty-one twenty, eighty-one twenty-one, eighty-one forty-one, eighty-one forty-five, eighty-one forty-six, eighty-three hundred, and ninety-two seventy.
I'll make that motion in a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Thank you. It is approved. Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda items. Anything that needs to be removed? If not, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. So.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. or Dr. Gabor?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Noem?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Umlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Spink?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Bords.
Aye.
Can I add one thing before we go on?
Sure.
I'm seeing like the donation from Ace Hardware and the donation from the family and the stuff for the bleacher. How do people find out about these? Because like Lisa said, we have a very giving community that if people knew there was a need in our school, I know even last year, um, our school nurse had contacted a couple of us regarding some minor things she needed. We put out a notice on Facebook and I think she went on, um, what was it?
Amazon.
Amazon, put out a wish list and the community got her a bunch of stuff. Is there a wish list somewhere for the high school of things that if people wanted to donate, they go to? I mean, how do you find out about this stuff?
It's a good point. We'll, uh, we'll meet and talk about it and report back.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great, great idea.
I would say along those same lines, that you guys have really increased the Facebook presence. I mean,
Yeah, I've noticed that too. It's, it's very noticeable and appreciated.
Well, we've done a ton of thanks and appreciations and Katie Ryan's behind that with a lot of, with a really strong team with her. It's been, really been, uh, I guess making just the, whether it's the social media, just increasing the social media presence as a whole.
And Emily and Stacy.
Mm-hmm. Right, strong team.
What was that, Katie?
Em- Emily Wisner and Stacy Larson are helping with that too.
Okay.
Thanks for the observation.
Yeah, that's a great idea, honey.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, people right now are even asking for like the wish trees, you know, what banks have this or that. You know, if there's wishes for the high school for, you know, even teachers, if there's a need that's a want, it'd be really cool to have. Where do we, where do we find that? Cause people are really giving here.
Very true.
We'll work on it. Thanks. It's great.
Okay, very good. Next are action items. Um, I guess the only thing we will have is the troopers report.
Okay, um, in front of you, you have some links. I believe the first one is what you have been looking for in your monthly reports for department budgets. Um, just wanna verify that that is correct. Okay, any questions on what was provided there? And of course, it was, and it was ending, um, October thirty-first. Look good?
Yep.
Okay. Um, again, the credit card transactions. Um, you saw an email from me today because I did receive some questions about some of the credit card transactions. Um, I did meet with the supervisor where there were questions and so she's digging into those things. Um, what's happening right now is I'm a little bit ahead of the Skyward approval transactions. So, um, they haven't been uploaded for director approvals yet. So you're seeing things that, um, like I said, are ahead of the game. Um, and then you have your vendor check history for the month. I retracted the one that was originally in there and deleted the liabilities. So it seems that you haven't been seeing all of those liability accounts, so now you're only seeing the expenses. I hope that helped.
Yes.
Alright, any questions for Erica?
On the credit card report, are you gonna be able to just research to modify that one?
Yeah, and I know, Sean, you asked about this previously. Um, how does the board know what fund is supporting each of those expenses? Um, I have reached out to some more business officials across the state just to ask about their P-card. Um, I guess their policies and their processes for how they, how they run their P-cards. Um, because I can tell administratively it is, um, uh, it, it's a little frustrating right now, I guess I could say.
And we're recognizing Erica's working, she'll be working, continuing, she's been around the clock in general. But obviously these are things we're trying to figure out. The financials, the finances are beyond important to everybody in this room.
A lot of what is running through the credit cards are running through Fund Twenty-One, so a lot of your activity accounts. And I think that just needs to be a bigger understanding, um, for the information that we're pushing to you. Um, like when I look at, personally, I have a school credit card, so if I'm paying, for example, my WASD membership dues, that's obviously a fun kind expenditure and I can, you can clearly see that on those credit cards. But when you have items and, and I could tell you, when I see the credit card expenses too, I get a little bit anxious because I see things like Airbnb's. Okay, so I found out today that, um, our Nordic ski track, uh, ski team was up in Cable. And because I can't find, you know, regular hotels, hotels, there Airbnb places. So there's just very odd things like that where it might look like there's fraud on the credit card, but there are actual expenses for the district. And those things are coming out of the activity accounts.
Is there a credit card we can assign? I mean, to leave it the same, but I know it said like loaner one or loaner two or something.
Yeah.
Can we sign, assign a credit card to our clubs and activities that we would know that loaner card three, if you labeled it activities, that that's not necessarily an expense we're paying?
I actually thought about something like that today. If we had, um, some credit cards out there and maybe we just need to say, hey, if, if our advisors are using Fund Twenty-One, let's, let's have them use these specific loaner cards. So you know that loaner card one is for Fund Twenty-One. Um, that, I'm gonna be interested to see how big our school districts are, are utilizing their P-cards. Um, I know a few years ago, the school district here, everybody had their own P-card. And frankly, I can't imagine trying to rope that in. It had to be pretty crazy. Um, right now we have twenty-five active P-cards.
Yeah, I think at one time there was, each department had a P-card. It wasn't every teacher. So if you had six teachers in a department, that, just that department had a P-card.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think I've seen that we have over a hundred credit cards that have been deactivated. I can't imagine trying to manage all of that.
Any other questions, concerns?
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I guess then that ends our meeting for tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion in a second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Foesed? We are adjourned and thank you very much. Thank you students for staying this entire time.
If we have items, so much more, maybe, we don't, you know.
Yes.
How, how is that going?
Maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be a agenda.
Uh, that, that's right, but, yeah, but I mean, we've talked.
Thanks to all here for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we have talked about, you know, Rich doing graphics. How is that working? Jose talked about printers, which means how are, how is that adjusted to not have the rich twenty-four-seven graphics?
Okay. Yeah, good idea.
How the, how the system is working with the flight staffing or something like that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Good topic.
And I am curious about how we could create some type of wish list and then give it to the students.
It's a fantastic idea.
There is, because I know when we put the one out, um, for Kathy Reimer, I mean, it was basic necessities and we threw it on Facebook and it's amazing how many people went on Amazon and filled their wishes. I mean, it was like red sea ear cuffs. Just basic things that filled her room, that if there's any teachers with any fun little things they need, people love to do that.
To the high schools, certain courses, are they out there?
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, everyone?
Yeah, see you guys.
Bye, Dean. Are you off hunting now just for deer season here?
Just local now.
Okay.
Yeah, I got back home last night.
Okay.
What time did you get home?
Eleven-thirty, I guess, eleven-thirty, eleven-four.
Wow.
I didn't get to sleep till four o'clock and I'm just.
Just wired?
Yeah, well, I don't usually drink, uh, caffeine and, uh, I stopped twice and got two quick trip lattes and by the time I got home, it was like.
Do you drive all the way through there?
Yeah.
And how many hours is it?
About thirteen, fifteen hours.
Okay.